Good afternoon. I will now call to order the October 13th Policy Session of the Phoenix City Council. Thank you so much for joining us today. We will begin today's council meetings with questions and updates from members of the Phoenix Do any council members have updates? Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mayor. So I just wanted to remind everyone that District 5 will be hosting the mobile COVID testing van this Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Old Kmart at 2526 West Northern Avenue. Testing is free for everyone, and the mobile testing van offers viral and antibody tests with rapid results within 15 minutes. Please visit phoenix.com/covidtesting for appointments and all other COVID testing times and locations. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any additional council member updates?
Mayor, give me a minute. I need to find my packet.
Perfect. We will come to Councilwoman Pastor in a moment. I will acknowledge that yesterday was Indigenous Peoples' Day, which was adopted unanimously by the Phoenix City Council four years ago. This was our first virtual celebration of that day, which recognizes our roots as a city, that we would not be here without our Indigenous communities. We are on the... The city is built on the traditional homelands of the Acomo Odom and Peepash, and today we have one of the largest Native American communities of any city in the country. I want to thank everyone who joined us to celebrate the economic, cultural, and historical contributions of our Indigenous communities. And we know it is not one day we should acknowledge this, but it was an important acknowledgement Last week, moving to a different topic, last week we had major damage to our Mesquite Library that created a very difficult environment. Councilwoman Stark and I were able to visit the site together, and I want to thank our city team who worked so diligently. Public Works responded quickly and did a great job. Our Police Department has been working to investigate the damage, and our library staff pivoted quickly. They were up and running by Saturday with curbside service, which certainly beyond the call of duty, but very impressive. And I don't know, Councilwoman Stark, if you wanted to add anything on Mesquite Library?
They really did. It was amazing how many people were using the library, and I understand that we missed Councilwoman Waring by 20 minutes. He was there picking up his books curbside, so I'm glad to see...
I would have still been there, but I heard you guys were coming, so I...
Good decision. Good decision.
Well, we're glad to hear you're still using our libraries.
I went out and used the library. I did that morning.
I'm impressed.
Yeah, so great job by Team Phoenix. I am sorry that the damage occurred. Disappointing, but thank you to everyone who helped make it a little bit better. Today, we are also saying farewell to Aviation Director Jim Bennett and Assistant Director Deb Ostriker. Both have left a lasting mark on Sky Harbor and provided a strong foundation for our airport to continue to build upon. Want to thank them for their service to the city and work to create a world-class airport. In their time leading Sky Harbor, we have completed Terminal 3 modernization, Level 3 Airport Accreditation Program, and scored among... as the leading airport in multiple different rankings, including Wall Street Journal. So I want to, on behalf of the council, thank you for your service to the city of Phoenix, and happy travels in retirement. Councilwoman Pastor is now... Are you ready for a few updates?
I am. I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Williams because we are working together to virtually celebrate our 150th anniversary of founding of Phoenix. Our original plans changed dramatically due to COVID, but our Phoenix 150 face masks are going to look great. On October 10th was the two-year anniversary of our Fire Cancer Prevention and Education Program. In two years, we have caught over 39 cancers in the earliest stages with everyone going back to work, which proves early intervention and screenings are much more effective and cost-effective for our cities and a true win-win. Monday, we broke ground at Station 9 on our first farm, and next week, we will begin our Sex Crimes Outreach Program by making informative videos targeting our most vulnerable citizens, working with Lieutenant Fields. I look forward to helping make our community safer. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I was like, was I on mute the whole time?
I look forward to the days when mute buttons are less of our everyday reality.
Thank you.
We may turn to roll call unless there are any additional council member updates. All right, then I will turn to our city staff for a roll call of council members.
Councilman DeCiccio?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilman Nowakowski? Councilwoman Pastor? Councilwoman Stark?
Here.
Councilman Waring?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wardado?
Here.
Mayor Gallego?
Congratulations to our Budget Director Amber Williamson, who has assumed that role, and we are lucky to have her there. We will be hearing from her on the 2019-2020 General Funds Results and the 2021-22 Budget Calendar. I will turn to City Manager Ed Zirker to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and Mayor, thank you for recognizing we do have a new Budget Director. Amber Williamson has started this budget year as the Budget Director under the supervision of our former Budget Director, who is now Deputy City Manager Jeff Barton. I want to thank the council, your quick action this spring in light of the coronavirus and the economic fallout from that, as well as your allocation of coronavirus relief funds strategically into our city as envisioned by the Congressional Act have really put us in a solid position to start this fiscal year, which began July 1st, 2020. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Deputy City Manager Jeff Barton, who will begin the presentation with our Budget and Research Director.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you, Ed, and thank you, council, for allowing us this time to present today. I do want to echo some of the city manager's sentiments because, as you know, you gave us a lot of great guidance last year as we navigated COVID. So for the past 18 months, we've had to deal with the impacts of COVID on the city financially as well as on the lives of our residents and our employees. And the careful and methodical approach that you took throughout these last eight months is going to be illustrated here in a moment from a financial perspective by our new Budget and Research Director Amber Williamson. In today's presentation, what we will be going over, if I can get the remote to work, what we're going to be going over today are the results of last fiscal year, 1920, which ended on June 30th. Specifically, we're going to talk to you about our resources. And again, those resources, again, to our benefit, have actually performed... They've outperformed our initial projections, and so they came in above our forecast. Our expenditures also resulting largely from the hiring freeze that we implemented as a means to help balance the budget last year, as well as to get a good start on this year's budget and remain balanced. Our expenses came in under last year as well. So when you add all those things up, you'll see that our fund balance for 1920 is higher than we expected. And we'll also talk to you about how the one-time infusion of cash from the offset of public safety salaries using the coronavirus relief fund also bolstered that fund balance even higher. We'll also take a few moments, as we always do, to prepare you for any challenges that we see on the horizon as they pertain to this fiscal year, but also next year as we start working and looking toward 2122, but even more importantly, looking ahead beyond that as we set our sights on our five-year forecast. And we also, as customary, we will ask you to adopt our budget calendar for fiscal year 2122. That will be all of the budget actions that take place to adopt next year's budget, starting in March with the trial budget that gets presented to the community. And then finally, we want to show off the Fund Phoenix Budget Tool again and just plug that. Last year, you'll recall that we released Fund Phoenix in January. This year, as we promised, we'd roll it out earlier, so that will be released in early November. And with that, I'll turn it over to our new Budget and Research Director.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. We'll get started talking about our 2019-20 General Fund Results, starting with our resources. Excluding the one-time CRF transfer of $48.5 million, our actual resources were only $7.2 million higher, or 0.5% more than the revised estimate. But as you know, in June, after budget adoption, council approved allocating $143 million of the coronavirus relief funds to use as a resource to offset public safety salaries in the General Fund and the Public Safety Specialty Funds as permitted by the federal guidance. This essentially freed up resources in our General Fund to then be used to offset revenue declines anticipated from the economic recession caused by the pandemic. So including the one-time resources of $48.5 million from CRF, our actual resources ended $55.7 million, or 4% more than our revised estimate. Moving on to the expenditure side, we came in $17.9 million, or 1.4% under the estimate. Some of that was attributable to additional salary savings that we experienced as a result of implementing a hiring freeze. That was a strategy that we used to try to mitigate impacts to the budget as a result of the pandemic. Additionally, in the fourth quarter, due to COVID, the city temporarily closed several facilities, including libraries, community centers, recreation complexes, and aquatic facilities, so we experienced some additional savings in various contractuals and commodities as a result of that. So looking at our combined resources and our expenditures, our total ending fund balance, excluding the one-time CRF funding, was $25.1 million higher than our revised estimate. Including that one-time resource, we ended $73.6 million higher than the revised estimate. This was anticipated since the 1920 estimate that was included in the council-adopted budget was done prior to the decision to transfer funds from the CRF to the General Fund. This one-time funding does give us a cushion in the current fiscal year. However, it is one-time and shouldn't be considered as an ongoing resource. So next, I'll talk about some challenges that we're facing as it pertains to the budget. First and foremost is the economic uncertainty that's being caused by COVID. We simply don't know how it's going to continue to impact the local economy or our revenue streams for the remainder of the current year and next fiscal year. We're going to need more time to evaluate our revenue data and the trends and gather information about the local economy as we try to construct some reasonable revenue estimates. We also face increased demands for additional general fund services, including homelessness and mental health resources for the community. We also face higher costs for deferred maintenance of city facilities, and we have an aging fleet, including fire apparatus. We have higher costs for replacing and protecting our IT assets and infrastructure, including protecting us from cybersecurity threats. We also are waiting on results from the 2020 Census to see if we'll have any negative impacts to our state shared revenue streams. And we're also working with some other city departments, evaluating some of our non-general funds, developing some revenue shortfall plans to identify any actions that may be necessary as a result of declining revenues to those funds. Right now, we're working with the Phoenix Convention Center, and as we finalize their plans, we'll communicate information with council. So next, I'd like to talk about some challenges that we have on the expenditure side. We continue to see increased costs for public safety pension. So as the chart demonstrates, with police costs represented in the blue bars and fire in the red bars, this information presents our actuals going back to 1516 through our adopted budget of 2021 through the forecasted pension costs through 2425. We anticipate increases in our pension costs because we received some preliminary information from the Public Safety Actuary, which suggests because of some changes that the PSPRS Board made to some actuarial assumptions, including changing the payroll growth rate, we could see increases anywhere from $12 million starting in fiscal '22, '23 up to $38 million in '24, '25. This is preliminary. We expect to receive the final employer rates in December upon completion of their June 30th, 2020 evaluation. So next, staff request council action today to adopt the 2122 Budget Calendar. We'll start in March with bringing you the preliminary general fund status and five-year forecast. Then the city manager's budget will go on May 4th. Then we'll move into our legally required budget adoption steps with tentative budget adoption on June 2nd, final budget adoption on June 16th, and then wrapping it up on July 1st with our property tax levy adoption. Then, as Jeff mentioned, we wanted to give a plug for our Fund Phoenix Interactive Budget Tool. This was made public to the community last January. This gives an opportunity for our residents to engage in the budget process. Last year, we did have over 2,000-page views with 205 submissions. We're making the tool available even earlier, as promised. It will include information on the 2021 adopted budget, and then any information that we receive from residents in the tool, we will be sharing regularly with the council so that you all can use that as a guide in helping to develop the 2122 budget. So with that, that concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Amber. Do we have any questions? Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on the adoption of the budget calendar?
Yes, motion to approve the adoption of the calendar.
A second.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you to our budget staff for that update and for proposing a robust calendar. I am going to turn to Councilwoman Laura Pastor. We have lost far too many Arizonans this year, and we wanted to take a moment to honor one of them.
So I wanted to take a moment and honored Avida Avila Ortega, who happens to be Councilman Michael Nowakowski's mother-in-law. So I think I just read a bit about her. Avida Avila Ortega of Levine, Arizona, beloved wife, mother, grandmother, great and great, great. Sister, aunt, and mother-in-law and friend passed away peacefully in her home, surrounded by her family, on Thursday, October 1st. Avida was born to Jose Avila and Rosa Maria Costa Avila on January 25th, 1956, in Torreon, Coahuila, Mexico. And in 1941, Jose, Rosa Maria, and their family moved to Ciudad Juarez, Chihuahua. Avida attended school in Juarez through fifth grade. Though she liked to say that she graduated many times over as her hard work, sacrifices enabled her children and grandchildren to obtain numerous degrees. At a young age, Avida and Mary, Daniel, Raúl, Ortega, and Juarez, and they began their family together. In 1956, Avida, Daniel, and her family moved to Phoenix area, and they raised their eight children. Avida's unconditional love, support, and hard work allowed her family to overcome economic adversity and unequal treatment. Inspired by her example, Avida's children took up careers aimed at serving others. Throughout the years, she supported her children in their struggles to break down the barriers faced by community. Avida's faith in God, devotion to her family and community, love for her culture, and veneration for the Viña de Guadalupe set a powerful example that continues through her children and many descendants. Her legacy and influence is evident each time we cook one of her recipes, sing her favorite songs, care for our families, and when we serve others. Avida was thankful to God for providing her with a long and abundant life, and she departed entirely content with the work she had done to improve this world. It goes on to see how she was preceded, but she was survived by 31 grandchildren, 31 great-grandchildren, and 14 great-great-grandchildren. Wow. So I just wanted to give memory and allow a space for her to be remembered and let the Ortega family and the Nowakows family that we are with them in prayer. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman, for that important recognition of one of our accomplished We will next move to item number two, which is our Coronavirus Relief Strategic Plan Update. Want to recognize the work our city staff has done in allocating COVID relief dollars and trying to support our community in this very difficult time, help people stay safe and fight the virus. We will hear today how full utilization and maximization of these funds are beneficial and important to our residents now and in the months to come. We've tried to be very thoughtful on these allocations. We began with fighting homelessness and have supported our small businesses. We've invested in helping our arts and culture community get through this, rent relief, mortgage relief, and other programs. I am proud of the work we've done and the priorities council members have brought forward, which include supporting our seniors, supporting our schools, and other key partnerships in this difficult time. Thinking strategically about all of this is our Deputy City Manager Jeff Barton, and I will turn it over to him to present the item.
Mayor, thank you. Mayor, members of the council, again, back at the table. This will be a very short presentation. Where we find ourselves now with our coronavirus relief fund, as a former boxer, I liken these next three months to the championship rounds. We've got to get all these dollars out into the community so that they maximize the benefit to the community and to the city as a whole. So what I want to do today is just kind of walk us through where we are and where we need to get to. So first and foremost, as the current guidelines, as they're written today and have been since March 1, these funds go away December 30th, 2020. So pending any additional legislation and the debate that's going back and forth now between the House and Senate, we have to expect that these funds have to be spent by December 30th, and we will not be rescued from that date. So what I'm talking to you about today and presenting to you today assumes that that is our end date. That is only 78 calendar days from today, so that will fly. It will go very, very fast. Any unspent funds must be returned to the Treasury. We do not have the luxury of keeping them. We do not have the luxury of rolling them over to do other things with. Anything that is unspent must be returned. And again, as the mayor mentioned in her opening statements, full utilization of the CRF funds, it benefits not only the city organization, but it also benefits our community. As we know, many parts of our community are suffering, and they're suffering in different ways, and the strategic plan that you developed seeks to address all of those areas of need. So what I want to do today is no different than what I've done with you in the past. I like to kind of put things into phases. So what we want to propose today is a three-phased approach, and that approach will ensure that all of these funds are exhausted well in advance of our December 30th deadline. So first, what I want to talk to you about is Phase 1, which is where we sit right now today. And so obviously, we're going to continue to support the $293 million worth of plans that you've laid out, with 75 of those being directly pointed to the community, 75 million being internal, and then the $143 million transfer, which we use to offset our public safety salaries. That has already occurred and has taken place, so those funds are off the table. We also will be today talking to you about why we had to identify this potential range of outstanding funds and how much we think it is that could be needing to be reprogrammed so that we can maximize the benefit to the community and ensure that we spend it all by December 30. So based on my forecast as of today and as of the report that I issued last week, we see that there's about $27 to $34 million that theoretically could be potentially available at the end of this. Now, some of these funds, as you'll hear me talk about, are immediately available now because either they, A, were unallocated, or B, they've been allocated to programs that just aren't working at the current moment. So we would like to reposition those funds to maximize their benefit. In Phase 2, which would be next month, I'd like to come back to you, and that range would be tightened primarily because we will hopefully today allocate some of these funds immediately. But also, another month gives us time, me and my counterparts in finance, time to actually get through some of the issues that we're facing as far as supply chain management issues, as well as getting invoices processed and getting vendors timelines on getting materials delivered and installed. But again, we'll continue to support these programs that you've already allocated and any that you allocate additionally today. But again, we'll make any final adjustments to those revenue ranges or those forecast ranges next month. Then in early December, we have to, again acknowledging that December 30th is our end date, we have to bring all of our CRF transactions to an end. What I would recommend, that in the 11th hour, which is where we'd be in mid to late December, I would recommend that we further offset additional public safety salaries to free up general fund resources. Those general fund resources can then be used to address any programs that council initially identified as part of their original strategic plan or anything that they identify between now and then. This is, from a finance perspective, we talked about this at the GFoa discussion this week. Many folks consider this to be kind of a braided funding strategy, where you take funding from different sources and still address the initial plan. And so that's what we would be doing. And I presented this approach to GFoa last Monday, and pretty much all of the members of that call agreed that this was the best approach and that they were going to follow suit with this approach. So again, just to reorient you, here is what your $293 million coronavirus relief fund strategy looks like. These were the programs that you tasked all of the city staff with delivering, as well as, you know, the things that we were looking inwards on to fix our issues that we had internally to ensure that employees were safe, as well as to ensure that our residents were safe to come back into city facilities. So what I want to first focus on is the $75 million on community investment. We had a very detailed presentation to you last month on September 22nd that gives you and gave you an update on where we were spending from that perspective. We also, in the Gen Info Packet that went out last Thursday night, also updated those dollars in that report as well. But in that presentation on September 22nd, we actually started to have a conversation with you about the areas where we thought there could be some trouble getting funds out. And so that is the basis for today's conversation. So first and foremost, the Commercial City Services Assistance Program. We allocated $6 million under that program, and to date, we've spent less than $200,000. The primary reason that this program was having trouble and difficulty is really because these small commercial accounts, they do not have city services bills in their name. Most of them pay city services bills as part of their rent agreement with their landlords, and so this program has just been very, very slow to move. And so we think we should reposition these funds immediately. Next, we talked a little bit about this last month, the Refugee Relief Grants. About $1 million was allocated to 15-plus organizations to deliver services to refugees and asylees. This program is really in its infancy, so it needs a little more time to mature. But again, just given the dynamics of what's involved here, there could be as much as $1 million available there. But again, we need time to kind of let this mature, so we come back in a subsequent presentation to talk about what we would do with these funds. And then finally, again, left intact, initially you had foresight to set $6 million to the side to address any additional needs that arose from May forward, which was the time we initially adopted our strategic plan, and that those funds are still fully intact. So when I add this all up, what we've got on the community investment side is between $12 and $14 million available. Next, on the city operation side, you also allocated $75 million, and we haven't done a lot of talking about these funds and the programs here, and primarily is because this was really a lot of inside baseball. It's us testing our employees to the tune of $6 million. It's also us ordering PPE and cleaning when we have a positive COVID exposure in the workplace, as well as sanitizing and sanitizing materials. It also allocated $5 million for medical and public safety measures, and this really had to do with us enforcing the stay-at-home orders, as well as enforcing park closures, as well as implementing anything that we needed from a public health and public safety standpoint to bring residents back into city facilities, as well as bring employees back into city facilities. We also had $19 million that we allocated to offset employee expenses directly related to COVID. So this would be examples of where employees who had a complete change of job, they're doing job A today, and tomorrow they're doing all COVID-related work. So we'll talk about that a little bit. And we also allocated $10 million for facility retrofits. $6 million of that was specifically for facilities, city facilities, and $4 million, up to $4 million, was allocated for bus shields to ensure that our bus drivers were safely and adequately protected from exposed... protected from exposure to COVID. And then, finally, $15 million was allocated for telework and e-government. So, when we look at this and we forecast ahead, the areas where we think there's additional funds available, first and foremost, employee testing. What we've got to date as far as expenditures, as well as what we think we're going to spend moving forward, is about $3.2 million. So, absent a change in those forecasts, we could have as much as $2.8 million available in employee testing. PPE, cleaning and sanitizing. CFO Denise Olson has done a very good job at procuring and ordering all that she can. She's also worked on a very, very aggressive plan to make sure that we have adequate supply for the future. And so, when we look at all of those things that we've done and all the things that we, that remain to be done, we could have as much as $1 million left over. So, that assumes that we're going to spend 19 of the original $20 million. When we move on to medical and public safety measures, we've spent or planned to spend about $3 million of this that we know about. However, with the recent discussions about reopening city facilities, I would like to reserve that, that other $2 million and not have that reprogrammed at this point in time. I, I think we need to really evaluate where we're going to be and what other things we may have missed in our initial estimation, estimate of what we, what we could need moving forward. Payroll expense reimbursement, so this again, to date, we've only spent or planned to spend about $4 million. So, there could be as much as $15 million available in this particular area. And some of this, I'm ready and comfortable moving and pivoting, and that will be part of my recommendation at the end. Next, the facility retrofit. Again, for the bus shields, we estimate those costs to be about $3 million. And to date, we've spent about $1 million, or a little bit more than $1 million on, a little bit more than $1 million on city facilities, and we plan to spend a little bit more. Plus, we're also going to shift some funds from this area to telework and e-government, because we do have some substantial additions that need to be made to enhance our ability to continue to broadcast and do webexes and teleconferences, as well as to reach our public remotely. So, we could have about $4 million here. But again, given the conversations that, as I mentioned earlier, with reopening, it's very possible that we could exhaust that full million, full $4 million by the end of the calendar year. And so, when we add all of this up, there's an additional $15 to $21 million that could potentially be available by December 30. So, in our discussions with you, as well as just amongst ourselves as professional staff and things that we hear out in the community, a couple of, of things have risen to worth, I think, being discussed with you as far as potential funding opportunities. And first and foremost, we know that, again, people continue to lose their jobs. People continue to struggle to find food for themselves and their families. So, additional food assistance would, would always be welcomed addition to the community. We also know that there's also a need for additional homelessness funding, so that's something that we could look at in the future. We also know that there's a, a great deal of support to fund our vets. You know, the vets do a, a lot of work on behalf of all of us as Americans. And so, again, I think there's a lot of support to support the US vets. They're currently in a, in a facility off of, of Grand Avenue. And so, again, we're looking for an opportunity to, to possibly move them to a alternate site that would, would better support their, their needs. Also, looking ahead, you know, past December, it's unlikely that we have a complete vaccine or that everyone, if, even if we did, it's unlikely that everyone would be inoculated. It's unlikely that everyone across the country would be completely back to work. So, there could be additional need for additional rent and mortgage assistance as we look ahead. We also explored an opportunity to partner with the state on their landlord assistance program. After several conversations with them and looking at the dynamics of their program that they actually have closed, we, at this point in time, don't think that that's a viable option. But again, I wanted you to know that we did look into it and address it. We also know that there's still need, again, as folks continue to lose their jobs, as folks continue to apply for unemployment insurance and, and look for new jobs, we know there's need for additional job training programs. We also know that there's always going to be a need for additional PPE and technology for schools. I know schools are across the valley or, or in different stages of returning back to school. I know my youngest went back to school this morning. After-school programming, again, as parents start to work and go back and return back to work, and as kids go back to school, again, there will be sometimes a gap in between what they can do as far as watching those kids and providing for their kids after the school day has ended. So, there may be a need for additional school programming after school hours. And then, finally, we know that, again, it's not just us as humans that have been impacted by COVID. We also have our furry friends, our four-legged animals, that, that are also impacted as a result of COVID and, and our ability to take care of them. So, that's also come up a few times. So, with all of that being said, and, and based on what I think we've got available today, I, I recommend that we do the following. I suggest that we immediately reprogram $15 million. That $15 million comes from essentially the $6 million from the commercial program, $6 million from the unallocated, and $3 million from the employee expense reimbursement at this point in time. I suggest that we allocate as follows. $10.5 million to support our US vets, again, looking for a facility that will properly support them and support them in a better situation than they're currently supported. We also would like to allocate about $2 million in additional PPE and technology for schools. Really looking here on the, on the technology side of things, Tim Valencia and Youth and Ed actually recently surveyed all of our schools, our school districts. And based on what came back, we know that there's a need for as many as 8,000 tablets and as many as 18,000 hotspots. So, we would really like to explore this and, and find a package that would work for our school districts to help them bridge that gap. We also, in concert with our food banks, we know that they could definitely use another million dollars worth of food. The Food Bank Alliance could use about $300,000, and we know St. Mary's could use about $700,000 to secure hard-to-find items such as peanut butter, canned food, canned meats, and things of that nature. We also know that there's, again, we talked about the need for job training. In working with Human Services Department, Inger Erickson, Marshall Franklin, and Quaylin Waller have put together a package of about $1 million that would help with our Arizona at Work program, and it would function on, it would actually support four different programs that operate through there that focuses on seniors, job training efforts, as well as youth. And then, finally, $500,000 for animal welfare activities. We also know that there's, you know, I know there's a lot of debate back and forth about flu shots, and flu shots being a nexus to a surge in coronavirus over the, over the fall and winter months. However, unfortunately, based on the feedback that we've received from the Treasury and the feedback that we've received collectively through the GFOA, at this point in time, flu shots are not an eligible expense under the Coronavirus Relief Fund. But again, we will continue to look at options and opportunities to, to leverage flu shots for the community. Finally, again, I mentioned Phase 2. I'd like to come back next month with an additional reprogramming option, where we would look for the remaining balance that we talk about having available between 12 and 19 million. Those funds could focus on additional funding for business assistance, more funding for business assistance programs, more funding for rent and mortgage relief and possible utility relief, additional funding for homeless mitigations, additional funding for food, if, if necessary, beyond what we would allocate in my recommendation today, as well as addressing those after-school programs, once all the kids have returned back to school and parents are closer to all returning back to work. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you for all the work you've done to understand and meet council and community needs. We'll begin with Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you. I think these are great recommendations, in particular for the US vets. I know that Councilwoman Pastor and Councilwoman Williams have been working tirelessly to help find a new home for our vets. It's a great organization. Actually, one of my constituents is on the Board of Directors, so I think that's just a great recommendation. I'm glad to see that we can assist the food banks as well. And I, I like the thought that we place the money in the back burner and come back in November. So, I support this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to congratulate Jeff. He is always so wise and so conservative and puts out the best interest of the city. I also want to thank the Vice Mayor, who has learned that COVID has affected so many animals at Humane Society. We're overrun by people turning in animals. And so, I'm delighted to see that we can help them out with extra supplies, medical care, et cetera. So, I am fully supportive of what he has proposed. You want to march in yet?
We could, yeah, we could take a motion, or we, I'm sorry, Council, it looks like Councilwoman Pastor is ready.
Oh, okay.
Can you, can second Vice Mayor or Councilwoman Williams? I have a motion for the animal welfare money. I would like to direct staff to outreach to the Humane Society, as well as community bridges, to specifically allocate $50,000 for our dog hotel for people experiencing homelessness, because we know that the biggest obstacle for people to get services and shelter is to house their pets. That's the motion.
To boot staff recommendation?
Staff recommendation, yes. I was too excited.
And I, it looked like I saw Councilwoman Williams, but I could not hear you. Did you say? Okay, so we have a second from Councilwoman Williams. We will turn to Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I too support the recommendation. I think supporting the schools of technology is really important. The food banks as well, that was some, some of our most successful money that's been used. I do want to kind of clarify the story around US vets, and I think it's important for people to hear this story. The US Vets is an organization that houses folks without a shelter that are, that are formerly, that are veterans of, of the US state, of the US. But this shelter had been in a lease agreement, and they're actually getting pushed out. And I wanted to just make sure that folks understand that this is going specifically for vets without shelter. But I also want to call out, because when we're talking about people without shelter, and in this conversation, we need the county and the state and other cities to come in with us. And I want to make sure that both the public listening and, and those, and for it to be on the record, that the county, the state, the governor did not show up for this organization, did not show up for unsheltered vets. And we, as a city, are taking on that responsibility. And so, I hope as we move forward and we show our commitment that we're showing today with $10.5 million towards unsheltered people, to make sure that those folks don't end up in the streets, that the county, other cities, and the state pay attention and hopefully follow suit. It would have been great if they would have matched funds for this, but I think it's important for us to take this important step and make sure that those 250 folks that are currently sheltered do not end up with the growing population that are in our streets now. And so, I, I'm supporting this. I just kind of wanted to set the record straight on what's happening with the US vet situation.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. I have personally reached out to both the state and the county and encouraged them to support this important project, but we cannot wait for them. We have to show leadership. We need to make sure we are investing in solutions throughout our entire community. We want our veterans to have a safe place to live. Vice Mayor, followed by Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So, I also want to congratulate Jeff and the whole staff, and I know that you guys are dealing with all of us, right, and all of our ideas and everything that we want to get done. So, thank you so much for working with us and being patient with us at times and explaining to us what we can and cannot do. So, thank you. So, thank you for that. And I also wanted to say that I am supportive of all of the staff recommendations, but would like to touch on two of them in particular. First, we all know, as our city continues to grow, we have struggled with affordability and housing solutions, and this has been magnified by the pandemic and the economic instability that this has caused. We will continue to put pressure on our colleagues at the state legislator and neighbor, and neighborhood municipalities to be partners in addressing this crisis. I hope with the example said by this motion, they decide to do more. We cannot keep kicking the can down the road, especially when it comes to our veterans. Secondly, I had had the ability to meet with numerous animal welfare, welfare organizations since the beginning of this pandemic and seeing the growing number of pets being surrendered or abandoned to different organizations. Unfortunately, as the federal unemployment and moratorium on evictions expire and families are met with the loss of work, this issue will only continue to grow. Arizona Humane Society has been a leader, working with the Pet Housing Crisis Task Force, partnering with organizations include Lost Our Home, Arizona Pet Project, Hades Village, Arizona Welfare League, Maricopa County, Animal and Control, and Alter Tales. They are working to find solutions for keeping pets in their homes during this crisis. This goes from providing basic food resources to peer, to peer adoptions. I would ask staff to work with AHS and Task Force to get the remaining 450,000 animal welfare allocation out to our community. With that, I am very supportive of this and very, very happy to have worked with everyone to make this happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Pastor.
I'm glad my colleague, Councilwoman Garcia, spoke about the US Vets. US Vets happens to be located in District 4, and we, once a year, host a luncheon of hot dogs and grilling hamburgers and have a new vet for them on Veterans Day. And so, I've gotten to know, closely, have worked closely with US Vets. I'm also very proud to have said, say that one of the vets that I had met traveled three buses to go to work in Mesa to work for a car dealership. And I said, "What time do you leave?" And he told me pretty much 3:30 in the morning in order to get there by 8 o'clock to get to his jobs. So, we also helped him in his workforce area and was able to get a job at U-Haul, which is so much closer. And he is, has been very successful there and is moving up in the ranks at U-Haul. What I want to also put on the record is that, as Councilwoman Garcia stated, they are being forced out. They were told at a very last minute that this was going to happen. US Vets have been protecting their homeless vets by not saying anything about looking for new housing and a, a prospect of wanting to purchase the, the, the hotel or the land came in and basically, without knowing anything, that's telling them that they were going, that he was looking into purchasing it, and then leveling the hotel, which then put the vets in a frenzy and, and placed them in, in some anxiety. I reached out to the property owner and asked for a meeting and asked for some type of dialogue, and he chose not to do that. I didn't realize, I thought he was a model, because the, I found out through his website that he, he's a model, but I also found out that he's a former elected official. And so, I'm actually kind of embarrassed at the fact that an elected official would do something like this to US vets. So, I'm very proud of ourselves, and I think this is a great celebration for all of us, because we are keeping US vets, vets housed, but we're also helping them win their workforce. And I do feel like everybody else, it's time that the county and the state step up, because we all worked with them. And for whatever reason, they choose not to work with the city and really be, to be a great state by putting our dollars together and then making it happen. So, thank you to all my council people for being there and doing this. One more thing.
Thank you, Councilwoman, yes.
I forgot my one thing, because I was so excited about US Vets. I wanted to make sure that our flu shots were included in our motion or in our Phase 1, Phase 2. So, I want to make sure that the flu shots are there. So I want to make sure that the flu shots are there. So I don't know who to ask that question to.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, we understand the motion to include a direction for us to pursue flu shots either through COVID money or another source. We think that there could be about $250,000 could be deployed to help uninsured people in the community as they are getting their COVID testing, to provide them, if they don't have insurance, with flu shots. And I think there was also some discussion about being able to partner using city facilities in conjunction with other clinical partners or the county to provide flu shots more broadly. So does that encompass what your concern was?
Yes, I just want to be able to offer flu shots regardless of insurance or, or with insurance or non-insurance, that flu shots are available during our, this time as they're also getting COVID tested. The second piece was the COVID, providing COVID testing at the airport. And so can somebody speak on that? I had spoken about it earlier in a private conversation, but it was regarding the airport and the airport providing COVID testing onsite.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Pastor, I've had some initial conversations with, with your staff in your office. And I just started to have a conversation with Milton Dehony, who's over our testing protocols. And based on what was relayed to me, you'd like to start doing some testing, starting, you know, as soon as possible through the end of the year, essentially the end of the COVID Relief Fund dollars. I think within our existing allocation for community testing, the, the, the allocation that you initially gave us in our strategic plan, we can incorporate that in. I don't need, I don't think it requires a separate action on your part right now. So what I'll do is Milton and I will go back and we'll, we'll kind of compare notes. And we can get with staff in your office to figure out a, a plan to kind of make that come to fruition.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilwoman, for your advocacy on flu shots. I think it's a great idea to open up city facilities. Maricopa County has partnerships to try to get flu shots, particularly for those who do not have insurance. But we know that our community members are used to going to our facilities and trust them. And I, that would be a great location. So if we could target our city facilities in locations where we think there may be lower levels of access to insurance, that can help our emergency rooms, help our community. I've spoken about, I took my son to Phoenix Children's in February of last year during flu season before COVID. Was a major issue in our community and it was just packed then, four hour wait at the time I got there. But if we can have a better flu season, it'll give our emergency rooms a better chance with COVID, as well as just making sure it's a little bit easier to get through a very difficult season for our health and healthcare workers. So again, not a traditional area, although our fire department has been involved in flu shots, but one where I think we can make really important contributions. I'm very proud that our largest allocation in today's motion is to keep our veterans housed. That I think says it is a bipartisan priority for the city of Phoenix. US Vets has been a great partner throughout the city. Today's vote, if successful, will allow them to serve 188 veterans and create new capacity to add beds and services for more new veteran, for more veterans and their families. US Vets has just done such an extraordinary job. In, in the last year, they served more than 1,100 veterans and provided more than 99,000 meals to vets experiencing homelessness, as well as helping our veterans fight jobs. Would love to see investments in things like commercial kitchens that'll help our veterans with, with great skill service and continued partnerships with our workforce development to find good matches. Our veterans come to us with great skills already and we want to put them to work in the way that is fulfilling for them and, and for our community. Also very excited to look for a location outside of our city core because we need services in, in every corner of our city. We do have several members of the public here, including from US Vets, able to speak to the council. So I'm going to go ahead and go to public comment right now. We're going to begin with Edward Welch, followed by Michelle Jamison.
You guys so much for inviting us and giving us this opportunity. I just want to share my story with US Vets. I was a homeless veteran and I was once sleeping behind Circle K on 32nd Street in Van Buren. Someone found me, they took me to US Vets. I got my life back on track. I stayed there about eight or nine months. I ended up getting a job. I found an apartment with my name for the first time in my life. Life has been exceptionally wonderful since then. About seven years ago, US Vets offered me the opportunity to work for the organization that saved my life. And it's just a wonderful experience going out there and catching those homeless veterans when they're down in despair and they're hopeless. And I, I can see it when I, when I'm bringing them to the program, their heads held down. Two months later, they, they have a job, they have self-esteem, they want to come back and, and help others and things like that. And if you guys give us, give us this blessing, it'd be a wonderful opportunity for, for me to keep doing my job and serving this veteran community because we need this assistance so much. If anyone has any questions, please ask. I'm always looking forward to answering questions. And my, my email, you guys, you guys should have my email address. If you, if you see a homeless veteran, please email me or call me so I can go out there and find that veteran and get him up off the streets. Thank you guys so much. We really appreciate everything you guys are doing for our veteran community.
Well, thank you, thank you for your testimony, for your service to our community, both with our military and with US Vets. We will go to Michelle, followed by Alicia McKinley.
Hi, I'm Michelle Chilis, who's Executive Director of US Vets. I'm just very humbled today, just listening to everybody and thank you so much. And this was brought to our attention back in May that we had to leave a facility at the end of the lease in January. I had this overwhelming opportunity, having to find homes for 180 veterans. And it was just, some of the parallels, the city of Phoenix has been so supportive of us and to help us. And thank you because it's a huge, it's a huge weight to bear to, to know that, you know, our housing could be in jeopardy and what are we going to do? Because it's not just my life or Ed's, it's 180 different, you know, veterans that call our place home every single day. And we so much appreciate that. And it's beyond words, but the gratitude. And I, I guess just from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much for, for doing what you've done because it truly is a community effort and we can't do what we do without the community. And there's just no words today that I can express my gratitude, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Alicia will be followed, especially if Elizabeth is with her, will be our final speaker. Otherwise, we don't have Elizabeth online.
You're on.
Hello.
Hello, Alicia.
Hi, how are you? And thank you guys for what you're doing for those vets. But I'm going to yield to Elizabeth so that she can, we both agree on the same thing. So I'm just going to yield to her because she couldn't get online. So thank you so much for helping the, the veterans, the houses vets, thank you.
And the pets.
And the, and the pets, the pet, oh yeah, the pet.
That would have actually helped you.
Yeah.
To a degree.
Yeah.
To a degree.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I just wanted to say, yes, I'm glad to see you guys using CARES Act money for CARES Act things. I'm glad to see there's not a huge funds misallocation or graft by the police or anything interesting like that. I, I, I am still a little bit disturbed at how high the allocation was out of the CARES Act funding for the police because it was quite considerable and quite considerably higher than what went to the homeless. I would say, the only thing I would say is in the future, it's not just veterans who need these services, it's everybody who needs these services. And we're finally looking at a budget allocation, which is realistic in addressing homelessness, not necessarily even for this one population because I still think veterans probably need more. But you're, we need to look at budget allocations that are actually realistic in addressing these issues. And 10.5 million dollars is, is not tiny for one population. So I commend you on using CARES Act fund for CARES Act things. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you both. Any additional councilmember comments? And we will, as Jeff alluded to, come back and continue the conversation, continue to talk about after-school programs, homelessness. We know these are issues that continue to need attention. And I again, agree with my colleagues who, it cannot be just the city of Phoenix. Maricopa County, state of Arizona, all are making similar allocation decisions. And we, and we hope they will also remember some of the same groups that, that we are talking about. Our arts and culture continue to be incredibly important to us in the city of Phoenix. And I hope we will look at all of our arts venues, including the Orpheum Convention Center and others, to make sure we've made the appropriate upgrades so that those facilities can be safe and reopen as effectively as possible. That can include studying our ventilation and making sure we have portable air, air filters, which can help not just those arts facilities, but also any buildings where we have the public. One of our great programs that has been a success even before COVID was helping people with energy efficiency and other green building upgrades and making sure that they can stay at home with healthy ventilation systems. So it's another program that I think continues to be a priority. Any final comments from councilmembers? And so we will have a motion to approve staff recommendations, including that flu shots, which could be from CRF dollars or from another source and looking at city facilities for flu vaccination. Councilwoman Pastor.
I have a question, uh, let me see. Regarding the PPE and the schools, I'm not sure what page that's on. So I guess I'll just ask my question. What I know right now, so I, what I'm asking is, I know that there's been an evaluation within the city of Phoenix to ask the schools what is needed regarding hotspots and tablets. My question is that Steve Watson from the county, who also has dedicated dollars, is also, has done a survey too. And I would like for the city education department to coordinate with Steve Watson and their survey and compare where the gaps are or where we can collaborate so that then we can spread, we can spread the wealth across our whole county and city in getting more resources out to the community. Looking, and I don't know where phase that is, so.
Phase one.
It's in Phase One.
Councilwoman Mayor, members of the council, we, we will, I will make sure that Tim Valencia works with, with Steve to, to figure out what those needs are. One other thing that we just have to be very conscientious about, and this goes back to me being, you know, kind of a stickler for the rules. So with that, whatever we do in concert with the county or leveraging with other folks, there is a little provision in the guidelines for Treasury on, on technology and PPE for schools that you're, you're given an exemption up to $500 per student. Anything above that has to be clearly documented and reported on at the school or the sub-recipient level. So we have to make sure that, one, and if we go above that threshold, that our schools that we're allocating funding to can handle the reporting requirements. But we'll, we'll work through all that. But I did want to point that out to you because I think that's an important thing to know.
And, and I agree with you, I think that's important. And if we do go above the 500, I think it's important with whoever we're working with to create a same template that everybody is operating off a same template.
Mayor, Councilmember Pastor, yes, we will have education coordinate with the county superintendent, Mr. Watson, as you, as you discussed, who can do that.
Thank you.
And additionally, as it relates to testing, we, just to confirm, Mr. Dehony and Mr. Barton will work together under the existing testing group to implement those as well.
Will we need to add additional dollars?
Councilwoman Pastor, if you recall, a few weeks back when we presented, we, we talked about, we initially allocated a million dollars for community testing. And based on our estimates at the time, we thought that could go upwards of 1.6 million. Based on everything that I'm seeing right now, I think we could fit within the 1.6. If we need anything beyond that, I could take care of that when we come back in November in terms of rebalancing everything all out. So we are, we are fine for right now.
Okay, thank you.
And just to confirm on testing in the airport, staff will come back to us with more information? Because I think there's a variety, there's different funds for the airport and then United and some carriers are looking at doing their own testing. So it would just be to come back with us with options? Is that accurate?
That is correct, Mayor.
Yeah. And, and then be able to coordinate with everybody and who can get tested or who, who's entering the airport and, and I guess required, not required, or highly suggested, who should we get tested?
Well, there are just a lot of different innovations coming at airports about how to deal with coronavirus. So we should follow all of those. We want to make sure.
Thank you.
Understand best practices. So that's key. Our, our airport is important to us. We want people to be able to travel safely. All right. Any final comments before we go to roll call? Roll call.
Councilman DiCiccio.
Yeah.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stark.
Yes.
Councilman Waring.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Guadato.
Mayor, can I explain my vote just real quick? I won't take too long. So I just, once again, wanted to thank Councilwoman Pastor, Councilwoman Williams for all of their work that they've been doing when it comes to our veterans. And then also, thank you so much also, Councilwoman Delda Williams, for all of your great work when it comes to our Humane Society and taking care of our puppies as well. Thank you so much for all that work. And I vote yes.
And Mayor Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes unanimously.
Wonderful. A great day for our veterans, our schools, and other partners. Thank you to our staff and the city council for moving forward on these important investments. We now turn to item number three, the Office of Accountability and Transparency. We will be hearing a discussion on the ordinance today. The final vote will occur at a formal meeting. So today is really about hearing from the community. This is not the key vote on this ordinance. We will hear updates from staff, council questions, and community comments. For those of you who are joining us for the first time, we have been discussing this for more than a year. We've had numerous policy meetings, work-study sessions, listening sessions. We brought in experts from throughout the country to study what other communities have done and learn what makes sense for us in Phoenix. So this is not the first, nor is it the last conversation we will be having on this topic. As a reminder, today's discussion is only around the Office of Accountability and Transparency. If you have general comments on the city of Phoenix Police Department, open public comment at the conclusion of our formal meeting is the appropriate time for general comments on the Phoenix Police Department. Today's testimony and comments will be on the Office of Accountability and Transparency only. I will now turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Milton Dehony.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I'm here joined with the other members of our team that's been working on this, Julie Crey from our Law Department and Mary O'Grady, who is our outside counsel. We're going to do a brief presentation by way of slides. And then we'll be available for discussion. for discussion or additional questions from you. So in looking at our actions to date, we have reviewed the ordinance with city council on Septem- earlier in September in a work-study session. Based on the comments that happened in the September eighth meeting, we made adjustments to the ordinance. The ordinance redlined provided to city council on September the twenty first, and this afternoon we're going to walk through what actually changed as a result of the input and direction that we received from council members. So at this point, I will turn the presentation over to Julie Kree from the city law department.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So we are going to review some of the revisions and two areas that might need some further discussion. Section twenty dash six involves the OAT mandatory investigations, and I wanted to clarify that there are three categories for mandatory investigations, under shootings, in custody deaths, and serious bodily injury that results. Section twenty dash six also has two additional categories that are mandatory, unless no criminal charges are filed or criminal charges are dismissed. Those are any offenses against the person on or off duty and use of force on or off duty. So that leaves section twenty dash seven for discretionary investigations, which means essentially everything else, civilian or employee complaints are going to be discretionary for OAT under this ordinance. Under sections twenty dash twelve and twenty dash thirteen, we clarified some information that both police and the OAT must timely exchange information, including all reports and responses to recommendations, and that the city manager may act as an arbiter between OAT and the police department. Then to address the issue of whistleblowers and anonymous complaints that were raised at the last meeting, we made some revisions to sections twenty dash seven involving employee complaints being included in discretionary monitoring. Also, in section twenty dash twelve E was revised to protect informers. And section twenty dash twenty six was added, that OAT will recommend processes for additional protections of whistleblowers or informers. Section twenty dash five included some restrictions for no law enforcement background for OAT staff and also a restriction on the staff attorney's experience with cases against the city. For paragraph twenty dash five D, addressing the requirement for OAT staff and their family members to not have been able to have worked for law enforcement prior to hire, we would offer some options that council may consider. Now, keeping in mind that this paragraph includes family members at this time, so all OAT staff and family members cannot have had prior law enforcement, we would offer four options for council consideration. One would be formally that they have been employees of any law enforcement agency, is how it's written now. Secondly, we could revise that to formerly been employees of any Arizona law enforcement agency, or using one or two with a time restriction, you know, with any Arizona law enforcement agency within the last two years or five years, or we could remove that provision altogether. Additionally, in paragraph twenty dash five E four, addressing the hiring requirement for the OAT staff attorney, that they cannot have participated in any cases against the city, first, we would recommend restricting that to ten years or less due to city retention of records requirements. Those make it very difficult for us to be able to verify that an attorney has filed a case against the city prior to ten years after the case has closed. So we would add in options such as what it's first stated now, any such attorney cannot have personally participated in a lawsuit against the city or the police police department within the last ten to years, and insert one to ten years, or to limit OAT staff attorneys to police-related cases only, so that they personally have participated in a lawsuit only against the police department within the last one to ten years, or to remove that requirement altogether. And at this time, I would take any additional discussions or questions on the ordinance.
Mayor.
Go ahead, councilman.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So one of the things that we talked about too is having any level of activism. I mean, you're looking no different here than you would at a jury pool. You would never allow an individual that has brought in any type of bias, whether they have worked for any police department, or anybody that's engaged in any level of activism, be part of this. So what what happened to the conversation about individuals that were involved in activists, what I consider the anti-police activity? Why is that not included in this, or can we include that as well? Question. That's my question.
Yeah, yes, councilmember, we can revise to include that in that last section, twenty dash five, somewhere in that section, if you wanted that included, not just for attorney staff, but all OAT staff, certainly with council direction, we could include that.
Yeah, you have to do that. Otherwise, you have a tainted system and a tainted organization, and it loses competence with the public, and it basically creates a level of bias within an entity, which you're not supposed to have that type of bias. So if we don't keep, I mean, I'm all for making sure that all police are off or any associations with any police department, but at the same time, you've also got to make sure that you have a clean system here, because this organization is going to be able to investigate and look into the police officers. If they come in with a natural bias, then you have a corrupted system. And when you corrupt your system like that, you have a major problem, because now you're setting up individuals within the city of Phoenix from a level of bias that should not be allowed within it, and taxpayers would be paying for that. So I think that's critical. Thank you, Mayor.
Um, council, mayor, and council, um, we would need to have some further discussion on what exactly is meant by activism, or how we would define that, or the ability to mark that without running into constitutional free speech provisions. So I I understand your concern, but I'm not sure how we would.
Well, it's that's not about free. Okay. It's not about free speech. It's a vetting process that you would require is that lack of bias. It has nothing to do with free speech. It has a lot to do with the fact that people come in with their natural biases, and you don't want to put people in there that are going to be biased against the police if you want a clean system. You want a clean system by that. You can look at their Facebook accounts, you can look at quite a few other things, where they involved in activism against the police officers. So you've got to be able to look at in depth. It's no different than happens, I mean, you're able to do that with a jury pool. You can surely do it with staffers like this, where you're going to have a much more in-depth conversation when it comes to the hiring of all staffers. So it has nothing to do with freedom of speech at all. As a matter of fact, it has a lot to do with freedom of speech, allowing individuals to have their freedom of speech, but at the same time, you don't want to create a bias against the police right off the bat. And you don't want to have police on there either, from anywhere, from any state. It has to be clean.
Um, mayor and council, we did add in one provision in twenty dash five A that stated that all the director and staff shall be committed to implementing the provisions of the chapter in an honest, independent, and impartial fashion to uphold the public confidence in the integrity of the OAT to address some of those concerns.
So would that be a vetting, then, of the individuals that would be hired? Is that the right type of vetting that would occur?
Mayor and council, part of that vetting would need to occur during the hiring process.
Well, I want to make sure it's very clear that it would be happening, so that there would be a vetting that if individuals have a level of activism, that they're not going to be included in this staffing. You got to have a clean system here. This is big. This is not a, you know, a whimsical thing here. You've got to make sure that everything is unbiased, everything is clear, everything is clean. So I want to know what the assurances are. Just putting that in there doesn't talk about the vetting either.
Um, Mayor, members of council, councilmember DeCecio, we need, we will need some time to do some further work on that. I'm trying to interpret what I think you're saying, and so please, please help with this. I.
Yeah.
What it's, what it sounds, what I'm hearing from you is that if a person has ever been an activist or protested, that they would be ineligible to be hired. Is is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm not talking about the protests. I'm talking about activism against the police department, yes. I mean, eventually, you're going to have to put these things down as to what that means. So the hiring of these individuals is critical if you're going to have a reliable system in place where people can't say, hey, that was tainted because of a natural bias that was brought in. So it's going to require staff to kind of dig into this a little more and come back to us what you see as a way to make sure that the system stays clean away from bias from both sides.
Thank you. We we will need time to look further into that.
Thank you, Milton. And I've got to, it has to be clean. This cannot be something that is a tool for anybody to be able to use other than for a tool for good. If it's going to be done for good, then it needs to be done that way. And how you set it up will determine the outcome going forward. So you've got to really be very careful here. You're dealing with people's lives, you're dealing with the citizens of Phoenix who demand and expect us to have a good police department. So it's not just about the police officers, it's about the credibility of the city of Phoenix. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go to councilmember Garcia, followed by councilman Waring.
Thank you, Mayor. And I said last time I wasn't going to entertain Councilman DeCecio, because I know what he's trying to do. And he's said so in his social media, and he's doing it now, and he's trying to derail this process. Um, I'm actually surprised that he's saying, having that he's against big government and against, uh, going against people's First Amendment, right? So what I'm hearing is that he wants us to create a list of people who have been activists of some sort, who have done, you know, participated in their First Amendment, and then those folks would not be allowed to be hired for the city? We don't do that anywhere else. And I also want to remind you that the entire investigation as it stands, and has it always stood for police officers now, is completely one-sided and run ran by the police department, which is the reason why we need to create an independent board that's going to be different than the process we already have, which we are not touching. That process will remain, and PSB will continue to investigate those officers. And so one thing I want to make sure is, is that I don't want to create more, something, more work for staff and council when we know, one, I don't, I don't think the the rest of the council feels way, but the other thing is that it's probably not legal for us to exclude people from hiring them because they participated or or used their First Amendment. And so I do want to say, and I think I've taken too much time, today we want to hear from the community, and so I hope we get to hear from the community rather than hearing from folks that obviously want to derail this process like Councilman DeCecio does.
Councilmember Waring.
So so I thought when Sal was talking, I also thought about the the jury example that I guess he used. Um, I I guess I would look at, you know, if somebody's been arrested by the Phoenix Police Department, um, that falls into the same category on the other side from having been a police officer, to my mind. I think when you, and I I think that's exactly what Sal's getting at, although I guess I could be wrong about that, that, um, you know, the juries, they ask you, hey, I've been arrested, how do you feel about police and so forth? At least that's my understanding of it. This would fall into the same category. I'm not exactly sure how you come up with a list of activists, but you could certainly say, you know, we want to get people who who aren't coming in, uh, you know, biased, and I assume that's what, you know, one group is saying about police officers, that they're inherently biased. You could make the argument that you've been arrested. I mean, I know people have gotten, you know, speeding tickets who have just gone ballistic and been furious and so forth. So I do think if you've been arrested, that may also leave a less than positive impression, even if you did whatever it is they said you did. So, um, either way, that could be an issue. Is that something that could be addressed? That's not a delaying tactic or anything else. That's just if we're going to go on on one side with no police, I'd like to see at least something to balance it out on the other. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, members of council, councilmember Waring, we're prepared to look at anything that you all direct us to look at. We have been working under an approach to this point that all of these individuals would be city employees and therefore would be hired within the parameters and all of the HR rules that we currently use for anyone that gets hired by the city. If we're being asked to determine if the people that get hired by OAT would have some additional set of criteria or rules to make them eligible to work for the city, then we're just asking for additional time to check out all that would be involved with that. We, that's, that's where we are today.
Thank you. I for one think if someone was arrested protesting the Iraq war, we shouldn't say you can't be eligible for city of Phoenix employment. But appreciate the dialogue and discussion. Seeing no additional council members wishing to comment, we will go to the public for public testimony unless, with Councilwoman Williams, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I I have to agree. Both sides are very careful on what the other is going to be doing. One side doesn't think it would be fair for the police, the other side thinks if the police are involved, it would not be fair to be slanted to them. I think what's important is whatever we come up with is absolutely a fair process, that no one gets in a position that there is a body that can, I don't know what to say, not indict them, find them guilty, whatever, your penalty. I think the public will not stand for that, and I think it is essential that this comes across as a very, very fair committee. I I know what the concerns are. Lived through a committee recently that I felt is whether biased against police, and I just don't want this to be caught up in that same vein or light in the community. Well, I think it's very important to continue, like, make sure it is fair in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional council member comments? All right, we will hear from the public. And again, we are looking for testimony on the proposed ordinance, what language and priorities do you like and not like? We are not a general discussion about public safety in the city. Uh, we will begin with Hannah Hayman, filed, but followed by Ann Ender.
Hello, and I want to thank city council and the mayor for getting up here every couple of weeks and showing us that you can sink even lower. You continue to play games with the community that has told you time and time again what we want. We have made it very clear that we want an independent investigative OAT with a community-oriented drafting process. What we're seeing right now is the exact opposite. Having your little online meetings during people's working hours is not an open process. Having these meetings require internet access. When people in our community can't afford food and rent, is not an open process. You're making deals behind closed doors to push through this harmful ordinance, so you can all pat each other on the back and cash your police union checks. And what is with this both sides nonsense? Only one of these sides is gunning down black people in the streets, and that's the anti-black white supremacist Phoenix Police Force that has been proven, you know, statistically using data, to be the most violent police force in the nation. And the fact that you're, you know, somehow equivalating this nationalist violent white supremacist force with the activists who are, you know, standing up for their rights in the streets shows how low. shows how low that you all can sink. Seriously, activists are sitting out here showing how to really lead the community, which is something that you all need a lesson in. You are all obviously incompetent at leading anything from this tiny meeting to one of the largest cities in the country. Cops are, have shown time and time again to be incapable of existing without murdering the black people and brown people who call the city home. They're incapable of existing without brutalizing the community. And they're certainly incapable of overseeing themselves. So, I'm glad you can at least admit that cops have no place on OAT. And this whole conversation here just goes to show that this ordinance needs to be stopped until you can guarantee a truly independent investigative OAT, until you can guarantee a community-oriented process, which this is absolutely not. And the fact that you get up here, Mayor, and say this is somehow community-oriented, this is accessible to the public, is blatantly ridiculous.
Thank you for our testimony. For our staff, is a internet connection required to participate in this meeting?
Mayor and council members know, and if you have internet, you can participate, but there's also a telephone number that residents can call, and that's in English and Spanish.
Wonderful, thank you. We will next turn to Anne Ender, followed by Samuel Merton.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego, councilmembers, Anne Ender. And my comments reflect my opinions and don't represent any organization that I'm currently involved with. But I would like to thank Councilman DeCiccio and Waring for their comments because I disagreed with the caller before. He's talking about his community. He's not talking about everyone's community. The goal of OAT, as I read it, is to create a team of competent, dedicated, and independent staff that will encourage an environment where the broader community can have a greater trust of the Phoenix Police Department. Broader being the active word there because you're assuming that the broader community does not trust the police department, which I don't believe is true, and I don't see any documentation that supports it. In the articles that have also been addressed, it does talk further about the law enforcement agency that, that a person can't be, have been an employee of a law enforcement agency. And I would like to have that defined. Does that then also include the former or retired military? Because I would certainly think that that is a law enforcement agency. And with that said, you know, this, if you don't have people that have some background in understanding what the task is going to be in front of them, it, to me, it's similar to a medical procedure or medication being denied coverage by possibly a, a person who holds a bachelor's degree in business, and they're telling you what's better for you than a doctor does. So, for that reason, and with all due respect to the city and to the council, I believe that this needs to be removed from the city's jurisdiction and placed on a citizen ballot for the public to decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Samuel Merton will be followed by Vanessa DiCarlo.
Hello.
Hello.
I would like to see some language in section 25D about the family members and employees being formerly law enforcement agency. I think that should be current as well, like any family members who are currently involved in law enforcement agencies. I also think, it seems like when I read over the, the draft, it seemed like it was that only participation investigations that are already set forth by police. I think that the office needs to have the power to conduct their own independent investigations. And then those investigations should be reported to someone outside of the police department who can hold the department responsible for whatever is reported. I also want to stress how important community involvement would be for this office. I think that needs to be a clear way for the community to have input and to, for the office to have community outreach to speak with the community. And I did see that that was written as well. I also would like to know how the director is going to be chosen and how the employees are going to be chosen. Is the community going to vote on who is the director of this office? Are they going to be hired by the council? That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa will be followed by Katie Beza. Vanessa, the floor is yours.
Mayor, it appears we don't have audio from Vanessa.
Okay, we will go to Katie, followed by A.J. Marsden.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
You can.
Okay, I had a beeping noise, sorry. So, I guess I, I wasn't really prepared for what I'm saying right now because I thought I was going to be able to speak generally. But I just want to point out that Phoenix is the largest city in the nation without an independent body tasked with holding the police accountable. This isn't something brand new. This, this, other major cities have an independent body that holds police accountable. I'm not, I really just can't understand why this is something that anybody would argue against. Any other profession in the world is held accountable to a certain standard. As it stands right now, I cannot support the policy as it's currently written. The investigations are not independent from the police department, and the policy has been written entirely without community involvement. I would love to have some input on this policy. Being someone that has lost a loved one to police violence and has had to endure the traumatic and dehumanizing process of it all. And I just, I, I would love to see other people be able, in the community, both sides, what have you, be able to give their input on this, this initiative. We need a fundamental change in the way investigations into the use of force and police misconduct are handled. Otherwise, why are we spending $3 million to establish the office? If you want to gain trust and respect from the community, you must show complete transparency and start holding your own accountable. Because if you continue to cover up for your own and don't stand up for what, what's right, you'll never have the trust of the community. My brother was killed by a Phoenix police officer almost five months ago. His name is, his name is Brian.
Mayor?
Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah, could I ask a question of, of Katie?
Go ahead.
Katie, I wanted, and you got cut off when you were talking about your brother Ryan. I think we've all seen, sorry, you know, thoughts and prayers with your family and, and yourself. I wanted to ask you a question about how, I know you've been asking for an investigation, you've been asking for information for a report. How has that experience been? And how do you see an office like, oh, being beneficial to your family since your, your, the tragedy your family went through is so recent? What kind of support would you expect from an office like this?
I would, I would hopefully gain support, some type of victim advocate for the family that would keep the family up to date on the investigation, that we could trust that someone completely separate from the police department has their eyes on this and is overseeing the investigation. It feels, it would feel more trustworthy because what we have experienced has, has really depleted the trust that we had. If, if an outside agency was able to investigate this, right now, the police are policing the police. The chief of police has the final say, and, and I, and that is not something that I think is right.
And Katie, one, one more question, Mayor, if I may. You, I mean, your, your brother wasn't an activist. Your brother, as my understanding, was actually a supporter of the police department. Do you think someone like yourself and, and the rest of Ryan's family who've now become active, not because they wanted to, but actually because you went through this experience, how would you feel if we wrote a policy that someone from your family, because you've been out speaking about the story or because you were impacted by, by the Phoenix Police Department, couldn't be hired to work here?
I'll tell you exactly how I feel because I felt it as Councilman DeCiccio was speaking. That would, because when he was saying that, I'm like, that would mean I would not be able to be a part of this. Any of my family would not be able to be a part of this when, as you just said, we had no choice in the way that, that, in becoming active. Because without becoming an activist and without fighting for my brother's character and fighting for quote unquote "justice", nothing gets done, apparently. So, we have been forced to become activists, and that should not be held against us if we would like to participate in something where we just want to hold a professional, a professional accountable. That's, that, it's, it's not, that's all it is. It's about making sure that this person that is doing this job, that we have entrusted in them, given them a weapon, that they are doing what is according to policy and they are accountable, they're held accountable if they're not. Period.
Thank you so much, and, and thank you for your work.
I appreciate you asking questions, thank you so much. I appreciate every.
Thank you. A.J. will be followed by Anna Hernandez.
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is A.J. You should all recognize my voice by now, and most of you can probably even picture my face. I do know that many different experiences have brought us all to the table today. But it is obvious that the OAT, which will be directing the CRB, is not well-planned out at this time. There are not enough details in place to move forward with it. You would not let your kids go out with the kind of plans you are presenting to us. Where are you going out? With who? Not sure yet. What will you be doing? Not sure yet. When will you be home? Not sure yet. But can I have over $3 million a year to do it? Mayor and council, I am asking that you give this plan more time, more voices, more votes. When I want the best results possible, I sit at the table with information from experts and all concerned partners, and I talk it out. Please give all Phoenix residents a voice at the table. I hear people clamoring for safe and healthy communities. Oversight after an incident is not the best way to make communities safe and healthy. Preventing crime is the best way to make communities safe and healthy. See how safe neighborhoods do it. Emulate that. I do not see how lack of insight and lack of partnership with the police can provide meaningful, just, and sound oversight of the police. Mayor and council, please give any plans for oversight more time. Oversight that includes more insight. Have more people at the table. Talk with people involved in safe and healthy communities. Give them a voice, give them a vote. The community asks a lot from our police, but each Phoenix resident needs to ask themselves, day in and day out, what am I doing to prevent crime and make Phoenix safe? I'm happy to talk to more people about this for longer than two minutes, and I'm not hard to find. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna will be followed by Elizabeth Venable.
Hi, my name is Anna Hernandez. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect, thank you. First of all, I find it ironic that Sal DeCiccio's comments come the way that they do given that Ryan Whitaker was shot by Phoenix PD in his district. And for him to say that our bias is going to color this whole system in a negative way is, is baffling because his bias is clearly all over the public. As he's called people that are anti-police, whiny bitches. So, considering that that's not a good look for the city of Phoenix, I just find it ironic that, you know, he chose to speak that way of the people that are just trying to hold this police department accountable. Secondly, the fact that in public, this council, not all council, but a lot of these council members, you guys say that you want transparency, that you want the public to trust you as elected officials and trust this department. And then yet, behind closed doors, you guys do things that eliminate that trust that we have fought so hard for. From eliminating the investigative, independent piece of this is just destructive to any progress that we're trying to achieve as a city for the people of this community. And the fact that this is the first time that you guys are holding public comment from community members on input on how this is written is just very disheartening to somebody as myself or somebody like Katie, that my brother was also shot by Phoenix PD a year and a half ago. And the whole ordeal has been traumatizing and so just hurtful and painful. So, like, we're, we're not out here advocating for anything that is out of the realm of happening. We're advocating for accountability. We're advocating for transparency. And that's really all we ask for from you as elected officials of the city, that you guys do right by the community and just do right by it. Be on the right side of justice, be on the right side of history, and stop letting people like Sal DeCiccio color your bias towards us that are trying to achieve accountability. Thank you.
Mayor, can I?
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Can you talk a little bit about what your family experienced trying to obtain the reports and your communication with the police department while trying to find out what happened to your brother?
Yeah, it's, it, it's, it's been a very difficult process. Immediately upon the incident, following the incident, you know, my parents are naturalized citizens, but they don't, they're not fluent in English. So, we didn't even have help from somebody that was fluent in Spanish that could explain to them what was going on. A year and a half later, I mean, we still don't have full reporting from everything that happened that day. The fight that we've had to do just to get answers, just to get reporting, is ridiculous because the existing policies or even what was existing a year and a half ago, it's like we're jumping through hoops to try to get some answers in every way that, every, and we would hit every wall along the way. So, it's been, I've had to resort to media attention, right, to try to get reports because there was no, there's no cooperation from Phoenix PD or from the lead detective assigned to the case. So, when you have to resort to activism to try to get answers, it's not because we want to do that, but it's because we're, it's all the tools we have left.
And how do you feel, and I know you're asking for more community input in the designing this, and so, I'm asking you now, if it was designed to kind of work with what you and your family had to go through, what types of things would you want to see this Office of Accountability and Transparency do?
Well, I think that a lot of people, I don't know if some of the council members have an idea, like, we're asking to have the power to fire officers in our hands, which I don't think the, the whole, the ordinance has been written in that way. So, I, I, I've heard some previous comments from council members saying like, that it'll be wrong to just, you know, automatically make these officers guilty. And from my experience, that's not what I would do. All I want is to make sure that somebody is held responsible when things are not followed through the letter of the law, right? The Phoenix PD has policies in place, has rules in place for their employees. And when those aren't followed, there needs to be an independent department that is going to hold them accountable. Having an, I, I want an independent investigation, to be quite honest, because that's the only way to be fair. At the end of the day, it's the only way to be fair. So, for me to trust the city and to trust you as, as council for the city of Phoenix, I want that independent investigation to be allowed. Like, why are the police unions dictating how our city is run? To me, that's crazy. So in order to get that trust, like, that's all I want. I just want somebody to be there to be held, to hold these officers accountable when they don't do their job, right? If they don't do their job correctly, there needs to be consequences. They should not be police officers. Ultimately, that decision lies with the, with, with the chief and with the city manager. I understand that. It's not that I'm, for lack of, of, I'm not ignorant in that fact, but there needs to be somebody that holds these officers accountable when they don't do their job.
Thank you. And again, I wanna, like the previous family, I wanna thank you and your family and, and for all the work that you've done. Um, and also just seeing you grow and sometimes you might not, you might think people aren't listening, but we, we've been listening and, and hearing your voice. So thank you for presenting today. I know it's tough to talk about your brother.
Thank you so much, Carlos.
We'll next go to Elizabeth and then I think we have a connection now with Vanessa DeCarlo, so we'll go back to Vanessa.
Hello, um, I wanted to say a couple of things uh regarding the idea that there shouldn't be law enforcement officers or former law enforcement officers in the Office of Accountability and Transparency. I think that the police cannot be held accountable by former law enforcement officers and it wouldn't set a good tone or culture for the city of Phoenix if that were its first choice for accountability. Um, I think it's fairly straw man argument to talk about activists having bias without talking about law enforcement officers having bias. Every human being has bias. But police officers have institutional interests. They have culture. They have friends. They, there is a definite um, culture of policing which would influence the office were it to be held by a law enforcement officer. I think there is quite a lot of clarity on this policy and in what the desire of the community would be to have from this office. I think a benefit of having an effective person on the OAT, uh, especially not having law enforcement officers would be to force out lawsuits. Um, because obviously the better you do and the fewer incidents your officers engage in, the more likely you are to not um have lawsuits. And if you track officers and hold them accountable for um earlier incidents, they're not going to be repeat offenders. Um, you can possibly have the chance to identify them and discipline them or make them not officers anymore. Um, you can create a culture in which these offenses are not permissible. Thank you.
Thank you. We will go to Vanessa, followed by Jisoo Kim.
Hello, can you hear me?
We got you this time. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for coming back to me. I appreciate it. Okay, so um, I would like to, I'm reading a direct statement from the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement. Um, the acronym N A C O L E. So they've identified what is meaningful civilian oversight as identified with more current research and how they, and this is direct quote, how they identify what independent is. Um, it must be independent authorities, not subsidiaries of police departments they oversee, must be independent from political processes, must be independent and permanently secured financially, must be independent, uh, it must have independence of voice. Oversight should not be kept secrets for law enforcement. It needs to be individualized, meaning that we have to have a very specific piece around um, looking at a community needs assessment that is broad sweeping and really identifies what we are going to look at in terms of metrics. So they've identified for each locality based on specific needs of community, it's individualized by a broad but not prescriptive enabling legislation for each municipality to establish a structure that meets their unique needs and it's community driven. So that's, this is a really critical part that goes to what we've originally said. So this agency has said oversight, oversight should be conducted in part or in whole by the people most impacted by policing in their communities. So this is what an agency that all they do is look at the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement and they, they do trainings. That's how, what they have identified. They also believe it needs to be empowered. Subpoena witnesses and subpoena um looks at that authority, the statewide repeal of laws that prevent public access to and publication of police records on discipline and other matters of police concern. And that they, that a board should also have final decision-making authority on disciplinary matters, uh, use of force, recruiting practices and creating policies. So these are really critical pieces to identify what is independent and that it is people that are directly impacted by the issues. And this can be found on their website as well. Under.
Thank you. Uh, Jisoo, followed by BD Hernandez.
Hello, Council. Uh, thank you for having us. I'd like to uh emphasize what has been said before me uh in opposing the ordinance as it currently stands. And it's a nice segue, the previous speaker talking about um the community-oriented process. Because clearly the stakes are far too high to not have a real community-driven process. It's a little bit ironic that even the development of OAT so far is happening without very much accountability and transparency. Public comment and the occasional constituent meeting are not enough. Directly impacted people need a seat at the table. When we talk about community, we're talking about victims, families, friends, loved ones, and coincidentally, activists whose lives could literally be saved by a proper OAT. And apparently, it must be said out loud, we are not in community with cops or any law enforcement agency. Their voices should not hold the same weight as ours in this process. We cannot have cops and their affiliates be hired by OAT. PSP and other processes are already clearly a well-oiled machine. That's why we're here in the first place. Phoenix PD does not need any help in that regard. They do not need to be on OAT. Now, OAT needs invest, independent investigative power. Otherwise, it would be beholden to the whims of Phoenix PD. Then why even bother going through all this? The budget fights, legal counsel, the many drafts of ordinance? By not listening to these demands, council is wasting our time as well as their own. And I'll finish by saying that it's true. Community-driven policy in the form that we are demanding would be a departure from the norm. But it is critical that we do so precisely because the norm is deadly, overfunded and unchecked. We cannot wait around and trust that the future OAT director will put everything into place. So I urge you, vote today to prevent cops from joining OAT and to remove the restrictions on attorneys who can join OAT. Thank you.
Thank you. BD will be followed by Caitlin Saunders.
Mayor, it appears Veri is no longer on the line.
All right, we will go to Caitlin, followed by Hannah Adams.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Thanks. So my name is Caitlin Saunders. Um, I'm frustrated today, like many of the other people who have spoken, because back in February, I was cheering for civilian oversight and um outside city council chambers because you all promised independent investigations and community participation. And then you went behind closed doors and drafted this without community involvement. And this ordinance doesn't do any of, doesn't have any of the elements that you promised. And this draft continues to allow for cops to investigate cops without independent investigation, which means that the victims, like people that we've heard from today, victims of police violence, are going to go through the same horrific process as before. So I don't see what this changes without those elements that we've called for. So we need to remember why this civilian oversight is needed in the first place because, as many have already stated, the harms against people by the hands of the police in the city of Phoenix is horrific. And I wanna preface that I'm a long-term resident of Phoenix and I'm also a graduate student and a researcher um at ASU and a writer, so I pay a lot of attention to words. And I think it's absurd and irresponsible that we would even consider passing a policy that just slaps on these words transparency and community when it doesn't actually implement, it doesn't actually build in ways to implement those ideas. Because transparency and community require independent investigation and actual community participation. Especially by those who are most impacted by the violence, as people have already stated. So when community has actually handed the council ideas for ways to reduce harm and then you come back with this, it proves that the city never had any intention of increasing police transparency or accountability. So if I'm opposed to this, that if the civilian oversight policy doesn't have independent investigations and doesn't have actual community participation, then it's a waste of our time and it's a waste of our money and it's bureaucratic violence leveraged by this council against the well-being of the people of the, of Phoenix and our ability to live safely in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah will be followed by Carrie Langlo.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Um, so I agree with a lot of what everyone has already said. Um, I actually moved to Phoenix in July um from Minneapolis, um, which is going through a lot of the same things that Phoenix is right now. And um honestly, it's just been really disappointing to see the way um Phoenix is not listening to their activists, not listening to their leaders. Um, I completely agree that independent investigations and community input are really crucial. I mean, Phoenix is the second most violent police force in the nation and we cannot expect them to investigate themselves. I mean, you wouldn't expect any like profession, other profession to investigate, like colleagues investigating colleagues. It doesn't make sense. They're not, they have a bias. And I understand that the cops, um, they have their role, but we can think better, bigger. We can do better. Um, there are so many people in the city of Phoenix, um, much more qualified than me, that have these plans, have these ideas and they are so ready to give them to you. Um, and independent investigations just make sense. You know, why are we so afraid of that? Why are we afraid of people holding our police accountable for, they are the ones that are protecting and serving us? Um, you know, as a teacher and talking to my students every day, I want the world to be a safe, um, I want Phoenix to be a safe place for them. And I believe that holding a police officer accountable is the first way to do that and independent investigations are the first step. I mean, we have seen um, how the police force just lies and tries to manipulate the media and, I don't know, I just, it's really important. And like I said, there are so many qualified, amazing people who are ready to give you these great ideas and really just listen, the community input is so crucial. Um, so I really disagree with what everyone is saying and really listen to the people that are directly impacted by the police violence. I mean, that you can't know what that pain is until you've gone through it and there's no one better to talk on it than them. We just cannot expect the police to hold themselves accountable. They have shown us time and time again that they can't, so we need independent investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie will be followed by Marcus Reed.
Hi, thank you. I just um wanted to emphasize the importance of this need for independence. I know how difficult this um topic is. My best friend in the world has spent her entire life in law enforcement and the most difficult conversations we've ever had have been about my support for Black Lives Matter. But um Councilman DeCicchio was very right when he started the discussion by pointing out how important it is to get the, the setup of an independent board at, right. And, and that is because as much as we need to support police um in the difficult job that they do, if we cannot understand the problem created when you have a group investigating itself, um, i- if you can't create something real there, what you get are the tragedies we've seen in every walk of life. It has nothing to do with police specifically, has to do with football coaches or doctors who uh are assigned to work on star gymnasts. If people cannot be held to account, you open up the door for uh the bad actions to never be stopped. And that is the most important thing to remember. If you don't set it up right, you are setting yourself up for failure and history has its eyes on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Marcus will be followed by LaShay Brown.
Hello there. Um, the reason I decided to show up today is it's, it kind of expressed my concern. It's like pretty much everyone else has said today, uh, with the fact of that the police have kind of found their way into this whole civilian oversight committee. Uh, I do believe as it stands right now, the police have more than enough protections to keep their behaviors from coming to light. I believe this will help uh with that. Um, I mean, as of now, the Phoenix Police have an internal affairs unit that somehow um cannot influence non-atestable behavior. They have a supervisory staff that sticks up for them uh for their, their subordinate's wrong, right or wrong duty, um, duties to the city. Uh, they have CLIA, which is a very strong unit that also absolves them from consequences for bad behavior. Uh, they even have a separate Bill of Rights built into their state constitution that helps prevent them from answering to their bad behavior. Um, even to the point where accused officers get to participate in their investigations. Uh, they are due a heads up and protections above and beyond any other, what any other citizen in this country or in Phoenix would get. Uh, moreover, they have a PR staff at their disposal that is funded more uh that is more, funded more than any other, than other uh squads that we have. Uh, it's the same PR staff that spent taxpayer money to produce a video on social media of some cop riding down uh six days ago drinking cranberry juice, bought with taxpayer money, wearing sunglasses, bought with taxpayer money on a skateboard, probably also bought with taxpayer money. Um, so uh I'm, what I would like to do is see a shift um towards this where um the community does actually get to uh be participatory in this whole process. And this is the only way that we can um try to start um having accountability to what we all are calling. Thank you.
Thank you. LaShay will be followed by Anisia Groves.
Hello. I want to be very clear. Um, from the plans that we've seen regarding the Office of Accountability and Transparency, this office will be the complete opposite of its name. This council has time and time again asked community to trust in it and its voice its concerns. Once again, the council has ignored them. When community back in February backed civilian oversight, it was because we were promised oversight that was independent, investigative, transparent and community-driven. We also see that there is a proposal to remove the language in the policy that would disallow those law enforcement those with law enforcement relationships to be hired by the OAT. Councilman DeCicchio, these comments you made about activists are disgraceful considering what you referred to as a bias stems from law enforcement harming and killing community members. Councilman Warren, I'm appalled to hear that you want to remove those who have been directly impacted by police from this process, even when it comes to hiring personnel. Shame on you. We now know those, those listening sessions that were highlighted to appear diverse and empathetic fell of deaf ears. While this decision to omit um independent investigations is not shocking to anyone, it is the flagrant disregard for the survivors of police violence's family that pushed us to speak out against this policy. Families who have asked you time and time again to listen and adhere to their demands. This is not even the bare minimum of what you owe them, yet it appears that the city will fail them once more. The Phoenix Police Department is the same department that was responsible for investigating Deion Johnson's death. If you allow this office to include members of the same institution as a part of the process, you will just be reaffirming that this is a shallow attempt to pass by community. We will not be fooled. This is the time to do what is right for the survivors of police violence's family was yesterday. The Office of Accountability and Transparency must have the ability to conduct independent investigations and this council should not allow any money from the CARES Act to be attributed to public safety.
Thank you. Anisia will be followed by Patricia.
Hi, sorry, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Thank you. The way that council has handled OAT is egregiously insulting to victims of police violence and their families and also to community leaders who have been clear about their demands and who have made a good faith effort to work with you. You agreed to a community-driven process and independent investigations, but you drafted policy in secret and you've been entertaining the ludicrous possibility of letting cops be part of OAT. Because to be fair, we all saw that fourth option to strike off the restriction in your presentation. This both sides rhetoric about bias is pure false equivalence because as an earlier caller said, police have institutional interests in the process. And I'm pleased to hear that at least. And I'm pleased to hear that at least some of you seem to see that. Nevertheless, you're still planning to waste $3 million more of our money to make yourselves look good with a fake toothless reform that does nothing substantial to change the current process. This financially and politically incestuous relationship you have with the police department and police union is apparently more important to you than protecting black and brown people's lives. Although you haven't given us any reason to trust you to do the right thing, we still demand that you do. Honor the community's demands in your agreements. Create oversight policy with independent investigations, a genuinely transparent process, and full and direct community participation. To be clear, when we say independent investigations, that includes, one, that no current or former officers and no family members of officers should be allowed to work at OAT ever. Nothing else is acceptable. And two, that the office has actual power to investigate, not just quote-unquote "monitor", i.e. sit on the sidelines cheering while cops continue to protect each other. Collaborate directly and openly with the community and go back to the drawing board and get it right. Something is not better than nothing when human lives are on the line. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia will be followed by Paris.
Thank you, everyone, community members. Thank you for taking time out of work to be here today, paid public servants. I would like to comment on Mayor Gallego saying that she wants us to talk specifically about the Office of Accountability and Transparency without talking about Phoenix PD. That's an impossible and ridiculous idea. Then Sal, of all people, is talking about bias and corruption. And it just shows how sad this council is and how little regard they have for the communities that are directly impacted by police violence. These are the people that are in charge of passing the ordinance that is the one slim thread meant to protect our community. That is chilling, and we see how much you disrespect and devalue the lives of BIPOC, queer, and poor communities impacted by the police. We know that a true OAT must be driven by the people impacted by police harm, and we have been demanding that since the beginning. Also, since the beginning, we have been ignored by you. Every step of the way, you have ignored and disregarded the community's simple demands for community input, for independent and investigative powers, and absolutely under no circumstance to allow police to work at OAT. There is nothing that is transparent about OAT or this process. There is nothing that will hold police accountable to the harm they continue to cause. How many more murders of black and brown community members will you council members allow? The policy as it's written protects the police, not our people, and we are here today to demand that you do better. No police at OAT and no funds to Phoenix PD. Thank you.
Paris will be followed by Aubrey.
Good afternoon, council and Mayor Gallego. My name is Paris Wallace. I am a professional community member and a resident of D4. I just want to say that getting to work with survivors of police brutality, it's been really hard, right? It's been really hard, but it's been necessary. Hearing in specifics how hard it is for them to report this brutality has even been harder, right? Imagine having to report your abuse to your abuser. That's what we're talking about here. And it's absolutely clear to us in this community that at this point, the city, this city of Phoenix, the city council and the mayor do not care about the safety, the rights, and the well-being of our communities, right? You're only protecting your image. And right now, in choosing to protect the police that keep harming and murdering black and brown community members, that's just further evidence. We've spent the entire year, you said it earlier yourself, the entire year demanding and working that community input and true investigative powers are present within the Office of Accountability and Transparency. And yet, you all keep pushing to hire cops into this office, right? You talk about bias, Sal. That's literally what we're fighting against right now, right? That's not safe for community members wanting to file the complaint against police. Again, would you report your abuse to your abuser? And so having cops overseeing cops is anti-black and rooted in white supremacy. It's a slap in the face to black and brown people, and it has a strong tone of intimidation, right? You've shown us time and time again that you are incapable of leadership, all of you. Delay the vote, implement our community-oriented process, because something is not better than anything, right? Something's not better than nothing. Our lives are literally on the line.
Aubrey will be followed by Emily.
I oppose the Office of Accountability and Transparency ordinance in its current state and urge you to make changes before voting. There needs to be a community review board, and there need to be independent investigations separate from Phoenix PD. I agree that no police officers or their family members should be part of OAT. Maybe have people hired at OAT sign something pledging they will be impartial and move on. I am specifically talking to the white people on the council when I say this. If you support this as-is, without community involvement and independent investigations, then you are voting in favor of silencing black and brown communities who are disproportionately impacted by police brutality. Don't you think white people have silenced people of color enough? Use your platform and white privilege to create positive change and amplify the voices of marginalized people. Be on the right side of history. Councilman DeCicchio, I have a question for you. What are you so afraid of? If police are following protocol and have nothing to hide, then there should be nothing to worry about. You want to talk about bias? Let's look at the whole picture. We should make sure that there are no police officers with ties to any white supremacist groups, and if there are, they should be fired immediately. There needs to be at the very foundation a desire to protect and serve all of us. The numbers currently tell a different story. The numbers show black and brown people are being targeted. You work for all of us. At least you're supposed to. More people are waking up. The next generation is ready for systemic change. We demand equality for all. Our city and state are changing, and it's only a matter of time before this system changes. We are watching you, every one of you. We hope you choose wisely. Your actions will determine how we vote. I hope each of you make your decision based on love, kindness, compassion, and truth. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Emily, go ahead, Councilman DeCicchio.
Oh, Mayor. Yeah, just to respond back to her, I think she deserves a response. One, I do not believe police need to be on the committee. I don't believe that anyone that goes in with a predisposed bias should be on the committee. But let me tell you what I am concerned about. I am concerned about racist comments like you made and the hate that you have presented against the police department and others that don't agree with you. That's what concerns me in our society today. It's the level of hate that's being pushed by individuals using racist comments like you did against individuals like myself and others that have no clue what our background is and our families are. So racism is horrible, and it's horrible right now because I'm seeing it come from these activist individuals attacking people on their race. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Emily will be followed by Sean.
Well, thank you all so much. Thank you to everyone who has spoken before me. I would just like to address what Sal just said. I'm not sure if you just called her a racist. Reverse racism.
I did call her a racist because she is a racist. She's using it, it's real. She's a racist, she's using hate language to go out and promote her viewpoint and to push an agenda, to force it on others without having a real logical discussion on things. She is a racist by using that language.
Reverse racism simply doesn't exist. I don't know how else to put that to you. I would also like to address that many of the community members have found it, and they've told us during this meeting that they have found it absolutely necessary to become activists in response to what the Phoenix Police Force is doing. And so to try to bar activists is just to try to further insulate yourself from responsibility in this matter. It's pretty obvious that you're just circling the wagons here to try to protect police officers from any accountability whatsoever. So the Office of Accountability and Transparency can be neither if you're not willing to include the community members who are most directly impacted. It's blatant, it's on its face. Thank you, I won't take the rest of the time.
Sean will be followed by Sophia.
Thank you, members of council and Mayor Gallego. I'd like to take a step back and just remind everyone why we're here because, you know, members of this community have been fighting not only for years, but for decades at this point, much beyond in my time, sitting in these council meetings, fighting for justice for the people of Phoenix. And this isn't an us versus them thing. So as Councilman Garcia mentioned earlier, you know, I don't think we should even address the ridiculous comments by Councilmember DeCicchio because obviously that's never going to happen. Now, as far as what is in this draft and what can be possible, there is one line item in this draft right now that is going to either determine whether this has any value to the community or not. Because let me be clear, this isn't what activists ask for. This isn't what activists want. Let's be clear about that. This isn't even a half measure. But Section 20-5, and a number of people have mentioned already, right? So let's talk about line D in Section 20-5, line D. Neither the director nor any employees in the office nor their immediate family members shall have formerly been employees of any law enforcement agency. That makes sense. If you begin to allow officers, family members of officers, it pains the entire thing. And let me be clear, just in case anyone doesn't remember, that the council has already agreed to spend the money to fund this office. So are you going to, and I think even people who disagree, you know, the council members who disagree, you already spent the money. Are you going to make it work or are you not going to make it work? Because we can make it a pointless office that doesn't serve any purpose. So please make it have meaning. Thank you.
Thank you. Sophia will be followed by Bee Thoy.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
Earlier, someone spoke relating to the fact that city council wouldn't pass a plan without getting all of the details. They absolutely did pass a plan without getting all of the details. The plan to address homelessness was planned and approved without any public input or provider input. So I just wanted to correct you there. Definitely something city council has and will do. But this particular CRB plan is plenty more detailed. We already covered an independent investigative and community-driven CRB. It's exactly what was covered in Plan B. So we went over all of this before, and I'm not surprised to see city council try to thwart it. I absolutely expected that because police accountability is something that our current city council is continuously putting up efforts against, which really raises the question, why? Why are you all so afraid of having police be accountable to the community? I'm often in the Zone. It's an area off of Ninth Ave in Jefferson. It's the largest population of unsheltered neighbors in all of Arizona. Just last week, I was speaking to two elderly women, and they shared their stories of being raped by men who knew where to find the most vulnerable in our community, which is in the Zone. You know who they didn't call after their assaults. They didn't call the police. They cite constant police harassment for being homeless as a reason why they don't feel comfortable calling the police. I personally have multiple outstanding charges for something as benign as jaywalking. That's an actual thing. I have multiple outstanding charges for walking across the street. And this is because of one particular sergeant, her, who likes to target me when I'm in the Zone. And I absolutely feel unsafe trying to speak to police in the Zone because of this dynamic that currently exists. The trust is completely broken between police and the community. I think we hear this time and time and time again, and it's really just so incredibly exhausting that we have to reaffirm this to you.
Thank you. Bee is next.
Mayor, council, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on this literal life and death issue. My name is Thoy, and I'm a resident of District 7. And I strongly believe that anyone who has been employed as law enforcement at any point and their family members should be excluded from the OAT staff. Time and time again, we have seen that the police are unwilling or unable to police themselves. If the police forces in this city were up to that task, we would not be needing to even have this conversation. We can no longer indulge childish fairy tales of a few bad apples or myths of the supposed good cop when our police force consistently ranks as one of the most violent and deadly in the nation in spite of internal PPD bodies which are meant to hold officers accountable for misconduct. The repeated attempts by the mayor and city council to circumvent the will of the residents of Phoenix is shameful. If you all want to make backroom deals without transparency or true community involvement, please resign instead of playing a charade of being representatives of your constituents. Councilmembers DeCicchio and Warren, your cowardly suggestions to exclude people who have been directly impacted by police violence and their advocates from the staff of the OAT just demonstrates that Phoenix PD and their supporters will do anything to avoid transparency and accountability, knowing that sunlight is the best disinfectant. That being said, this ordinance must be delayed until the mayor and the city council can get your acts together and provide a truly community-driven process to establish the new city office. The OAT must be an independent body with investigative powers, and the residents of Phoenix will not stand idly by while our elected officials ignore our voices. Your anti-blackness and support for the forces of white supremacy will not go unnoticed. And I really, 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 really just wish that y'all would make the barest effort to allow community a full opportunity to present themselves at these meetings. 2:30 is when most of us have to work, so it's really just not a great look for y'all to try to hide behind 2:30 meetings.
Thank you. Thanks to all who waited through the council meeting to provide comment. That is our final public comment, council member comments. All right, well, thank you to everyone who's provided comment. We will take that comment into consideration and continue to try to have the best debate that we can and the best ordinance that we can.
Mayor?
Go ahead, I'm sorry, who was that?
Councilmember Garcia.
Go ahead, council member.
I just wanted to double-check with staff to make sure that there's no one on the line that was called. I know Vidal Hernandez sent a message to our office, but I don't know if there's any other ones.
One moment, council member, they're checking again.
We just double-checked mayor and council members, and there may be names that are on our list, but they were not on the line to speak.
We're getting messages that they're on, so I don't know what else to do at this point.
Councilmember, can you please give us a specific name?
Vidal Hernandez was one. Heather Hamel.
One moment, let us check again. And we did call Ms. Fernandez. Some folks have come on using someone else's name. So for example, Elizabeth was on using Alicia's.
So for example, Elizabeth was on using Alicia's.
Mayor and councilmembers, it looks like Heather Hammel has now joined.
All right. Thank you. Shall we go to Heather then?
Hi, good afternoon, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this important subject. I wanted to start out by noting that on October 3rd, this city posted a tweet on the City of Phoenix Twitter account that quoted Tarana Burke and said, "The people who are closest to the pain or trauma should be at the forefront of creating solutions." "The impetus of the survivor's agenda was to make sure that survivors are constituency and our survival is power." This was, of course, in reference to Domestic Violence Month and the city's support for it. But I think that that's an apt quote that can be applied in this situation. A few months ago, when the OAT first got approved, it got community support and community backing because we were all under the impression that it was going to be transparent, investigative, and community-driven. And also, it was our understanding that the City of Phoenix Police Department or any individuals associated with the police department were not going to be a part of that process. I'm very disappointed that the city took all of the community suggestions, went behind closed doors, and completely changed the policy that the community backed. If this civilian review board is going to work, it has to be independent from the police department. And those closest to the pain, survivors of police violence, family members of survivors of police violence need to be able to participate in both the creation of this policy and in OAT itself. I also wanted to provide some statistics on why this is so necessary. Was that my time?
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
Me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Vidal Hernandez with Bullet in Action. I'm calling to just reiterate what the families who've been directly impacted by police violence have said, which is that these investigations need to be independent. It is not good enough that the OAT can monitor an investigation. An OAT needs to be able to do their own investigation as well. They need to be able to call their own witnesses, to ask their own questions, to initiate their own investigations. The current process is dehumanizing. And keeping the process as-is, but just with another set of eyes, does nothing to actually change the experience that is happening and does nothing to the purpose that you all talked about, which is to rebuild, right? To rebuild from this moment. You're absolutely doing nothing with the policy as it is. We need these investigations to be allowed to be independent. We cannot have PSB be the only investigators. OAT needs to be able to conduct their own investigations. And families need to be asked what needs to be changed. The most experts are these families that you've heard talk, who time and time again have to come and tell you their pain and their trauma during this process so you all can consider them, right? Ryan Whitaker's family, Alejandro Hernandez's family. Sal DeCiccio, Ryan Whitaker was killed in your district. There's a family that has been coming and asking y'all to take action and asking you to have a, quote, "logical discussion," as you've mentioned. You're not having logical discussions. You go on rants, this is to Sal DeCiccio, calling people who are protesting, the teams that are protesting the killing of Black people. So don't come here to talk about, like, logical discussions. Have a logical discussion, talk to Ryan Whitaker's family, talk to what happened, and call for these independent investigations. If there's nothing being hidden, there's nothing to worry about. Then that's what we're saying, is that the OAT needs to be able to conduct these and that the families that have been calling and have been going to this council meetings time and time again are the ones that have the answers and solutions. One of the first answers is for investigations to be independent. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional folks online?
Mayor, we do not.
Thank you. Councilmember comments. All right. Thank you for joining us today. Thank you for the feedback. We are adjourned.